Okay, council people.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order again. And we're going to go ahead and have public comment at this time on any city item. Anyone wishing to speak at this time on any city item, please come forward.
Real quick, on the last thing you did, the mayor did, when he restated the motion, said that you've not made an agreement that it was necessarily under the Lee Plan. Because that's what you didn't want to do. I would still urge council to pursue getting outside independent council to look at this because how did all these maps and everything else showing the mines in the city DRGR relating to the comp plan and all that, how did those things happen? I mean, that's a key issue. I really think that's very, very important if this becomes a legal question. And I want to add one other thing. The reason I was proposing what I did about if this extending the term of the license was turned down is that right now, when that's done, that's just going to be a raw, ugly piece of ground. If you allow them to operate this a little bit longer with getting money, maybe setting money aside to pay for any damages to properties, you can get that to a piece of ground that would produce good tax revenue. It would get rid of an eyesore. It would not put them in a position of leaving something in an ugly manner for us. And the other thing is, this thing about the DRGR, this city council and others have made a decision. Every time it's come up, they've not decided to increase the density. So that is not right that you've never made a decision. Thank you.
Rick Steinmeier. The DRGR, everybody said, well, we don't want to develop in it. Well, we want to save it. We've got a recharge, groundwater recharge area. We don't want to do anything with it. But I think the comprehensive plan says you can do some things out there, like a school or a mine or a public something or other. There's a lot of different uses, not, you know, one house to 10 acres. I believe we really want to save that area. We need to buy it. We can't just keep regulating the people's property to where they have no value left. It's not fair to the public. It's no wonder the public is upset with government, why they keep changing. There used to be one house to one acre, then it was one house to five acres, then it was one house to 10 acres. We're not going to pay you for Atlanta because we didn't take all of it. You know, this is, needs to be looked at real seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time on any city matter? Please come forward.
I don't have a very heady comment, but having been admonished to move my car and go out because I did park it in the wrong spot, I just asked the council and manager to think about a process by which, when we do do that, because there is not enough parking here, that we at least also instruct the people who are moving their car to follow a path of safety, which I don't think was clearly described. Some of us who are not used to moving our car in the middle of this and having to cross that road, I think if you could all get together with the, with Lee County Sheriff and with the manager and with you, we could devise a plan so we can accommodate this parking issue and we don't have to risk our lives when we want to come here and be good citizens. But if you could just address it in a little way, I think we can improve it.
Tell people don't get ran over?
Well, no, but I think, no, I mean, obviously, we don't want to get run over. But I did have a little conversation with Lee County Sheriff and they suggested a way, a path that would be a little safer than the one I took. And it's not because I don't know how to cross the street, because I do, but it was quite confusing when all these cars were going. I think if we had a little card or we instructed people when they came in that this would be the proper alternative parking area, I think it would be pretty simple to do. Just think about it and let's take care of our citizens who come here to speak to you.
Good point.
But thank you for telling us to move our car, so I didn't want mine towed. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Dawn Konsekowski, and I just have a question. During the public hearing for the EAR, if I want to keep my comments small, is it possible to get the emails that I sent the city council yesterday made part of the record today?
Did you send them to the city clerk?
Yeah, if you send them to the city clerk, it should be part of the record.
I sent them to you. I believe they were copied on it.
I was never copied on any of your emails this year.
I would encourage you to go ahead and resend those to Audrey and ask her to make them part of the record.
Make it part of the record? Okay, that way I'll be able to keep my comments short.
Very cool. Thank you, Dawn. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hello, everyone. My name's Alan Hergenhut and I'm here to speak about a recent WCI editorial that appeared in the local papers that was very misleading. WCI spokeswoman Laura Johnson replied to recent letters in the local papers by writing a letter titled "Not WCI's Project." The public needs to know the full story because it is very misleading. I was incorrect in stating that WCI Communities' name was on two applications to Benita Springs' Community Development Department. The first was WCI's app for the Raptor Bay 422-story towers. The next app to be presented for approval is a project change of Weeks Fishing Camp and the current applicants are Astero Bay Marine Donovan and Sugar Mountain Development. What needs to be known are some additional facts. Ms. Johnston stated, "WCI, we have no control, no influence with the owners of Weeks Fishing Camp. Allow me to be clear, WCI Communities is not a party to this project in any way." If this is absolutely factually true, I find it very concerning that both WCI Communities and Astero Bay Marine Donovan Sugar Mountain are retaining the same attorney. I find it very strange that the original Weeks Fishing Camp project presented to Benita's planning changed to mirror the WCI Raptor Bay 422-story towers. How can it be stated that WCI Communities has no financial interest while they hold the first refusal purchase option on Weeks Fishing Camp, Project 2? In no way was I trying to despair WCI's community or confuse the readers of the papers, that being the news press or the Naples Daily News. Ben, you were very disappointed when Astero Bay Marine changed the plan, eschewing the upscale Marina. City Council, you were pleased with the first project plan because you quickly, excuse me, quickly created a needed zoning to accommodate the new Marina zoning site. Please hold firm to the original Weeks Fishing Camp project, that it will enhance and protect the public use and access to a marine and waterfront areas of Astero Bay. One, two more sentences, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Two more sentences.
Go ahead.
It is important to preserve this cultural icon of southwest Florida so the public can use it as people have done for many years. It can be accomplished with the support of city council. In today's news press, mention was, was made how Vice Mayor McIntosh worked very hard to keep Wonder Gardens afloat. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time on any city item? Please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, it's always a pleasure to see you.
Hey.
Members of the council. I'm going to talk briefly, I'm not-
Your name for the record.
Richard Ferrera, District 1.
Thank you very much.
I'm not going to speak on the mining issue because I wasn't there at the zoning. However, I'm glad the city council took a vote and possibly now other people will be able to speak on that issue. I have, as a former representative of District 1, I have, I think, substantial testimony that may be relevant to a final decision. I can't speak now about it, but I certainly will when the time is appropriate. I'd just like to say, Mr. Mayor, that the Weeks property, the people that I talked to extensively in my area, we're very pleased that enough effort was made by the council to annex that iconic property. It's been there, that Weeks family and the Johnson family are part of our history in Benita. And unfortunately, for some business reasons, which are certainly their prerogative, they changed the direction. As a matter of fact, they did a compass reading of 180-degree turn, we used to call in the Coast Guard a Williams turn and man overboard. And unfortunately, it knocked the wind out of any enthusiasm that we had that a restaurant and Marina, public access, all those things would come with it. I think it was a deception. A business decision, yes, but a deception on the part of the developers coming into the city, given as a, quite frankly, I use the term, street term, a snow job. So I hope that the council will take that attitude under consideration. In closing, I'd like to say that we in that district are concerned about Coconut Road. I talked to one of the commissioners last night concerning the future of what is planned by the county. It's multi-jurisdictional, it's owned by Astero and controlled also in part by the county. But I hope that is a prime consideration, especially from whoever represents District 1. So with that, I'll close. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Thank you. I'm not on the schedule and I didn't know. This is the first meeting I've been to. I'm a full-time resident of Florida now. We live in Citrus Park.
And what's your name?
Lana Grover.
Thank you very much.
I'm on the association board for Citrus Park. And there has been concern since I first bought there in 2003. We were told that the mining would end. It didn't end. It got extended. And now another 10 years if they get what they want. Anyway, if, I don't know if any of you guys have any damage to your home from explosions going off or anything like that, you should come to the park and see what we have been living with. The old owners used to have sheets that you could fill out for damage. We don't get those anymore. There is nothing you can turn in to my knowledge. You also were told you could go there and tour it and see that they are restoring the parts that they have mined in full and are done with now. They are not doing that. On Friday morning, every Friday morning, I can stand outside my house and I can see the crack that widens every Friday morning because there's a big one that goes off every Friday morning. You guys, one of you should come out there, start checking, or at least get us back those slips that we can get our damage restored. And I say vote no to extend that. They have till 2020. How it got there from 18, I don't know. But that's, if they can't clean out that 3%, then, then there's something wrong over there. So I would appreciate you saying no to the extension. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time on any city matter? Please come forward.
Thanks. I want to commend the city manager for the work they've done on the Oak Creek Bonus Density Contract. I still don't know why we haven't been able to figure out how to get a set of elevators in there, except really it's going to make a determination about the young and spry being able to live there or, you know, maybe somebody a little older living there, because it's always nice to have a diverse community. I don't know how that's going to go, guys, but I do want to commend you also on getting the kayak launch in there. That's awesome. Love it because Oak Creek is beautiful. And next, will we be having, during the hearing on the year, will we have an opportunity for public comment at that time, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I appreciate it. I will reserve my comments and I will look forward to seeing what y'all do later.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time?
I'm one of those who parked over there. I want to support Amy. I think that there should be a pedestrian light over there that we can switch on so that the traffic will stop so that we can get over there safely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good morning again. For the record, Kathy McGrath, and let me lighten things up a little bit with some fun stuff. Let me start with the Benita Wonder Gardens. This is their 80th year anniversary and so much has been going on. And I'm not on the board, but I'm a huge, huge supporter. And huge, as Billy would say. And Steve and Connie McIntosh, their efforts for their fundraising the other night were awesome. Somehow, a gentleman stepped up who previously with his foundation donated to the Botanical Garden and the Zoo in Naples, came up with a $50,000 donation. I believe his name was Mr. Schwab, am I correct? Schab? Schab? Excuse me, Mr. Schab. And then I think he even donated more. I think they raised almost $80,000. Now, there's a lot going on this weekend at the Benita Wonder Gardens and check the website because it would take too long to list it all, but Saturday in particular is going to be Family Fun Day, so bring your kids out, just have a ball. Johnny O's going to be there, photo opportunities and all. Also, Saturday night, movies in the park. If you've never brought your family and kids there, it's a wonderful thing. Look, the weather's warmed up, it's, there'll be photo ops, the movie is Cinderella, so bring your little prince and princesses and princes, did I say that right? And take some photos, okay? There'll be popcorn there, okay? The next thing, this is not a city event, but it benefits nonprofits, and that's the Benita Blues Fest. This is the 10th anniversary and it will be March 11th and 12th. And yes, it does cost to get in, but they benefit the assistance office, the Galisano Children's Hospital, and music for minors, so come out for that. The date, we haven't chosen a headliner yet, but the date for Celebrate Benita is April 9th, so put that down. And now, I had mentioned this at the last council meeting, which of course went to almost midnight, as we all know, and it concerns the ballots for the voting for Benita Springs Utilities. I didn't bring the statistics this time, but the best I can remember is I think last year they sent out over 20,000 and I think they got back 4,000. So please, folks, you take your ballot, you just mark three names there and send it in a postage-paid envelope, so please do it. And finally, I guess I do have to mention something about, since Logan Boulevard was mentioned, and I think you've all known that I'm a proponent of proper low-density development in the DRGR. And let me remind you, as was mentioned at the last Government Day, which I believe there's another Government Day on Friday, okay? John Jenkins from Benita Springs Utilities told the students that day, and it's common knowledge, we've known it forever, their wells go down to 1,000 feet. Now, I am not a water expert, but tell me, how long do you think it would take a sheet flow to trickle down 1,000 feet? Our water is not being compromised by any development properly in the DRGR. Our water is being protected by the Crew Trust. Logan Boulevard's coming, we all know whether there's development or not. Benita Beach Road, Benita Grand and Terry Street are going to have to be improved. And if there was development there, they could help pay for it, we're going to have to pay for it now. So thank you very much for letting me express that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Your taxpayer action group, let me also bring forward some fun stuff. The prospect of saving maybe 10, $20 million, maybe more. And thanks for adding, and thanks for adding the public comment to the agenda today, Mayor. The inter, oh darn it.
Tell them I'm not here.
Forgive me, this might be important.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else at this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and carry on with-
Mr. Mayor, before we move to the next item, I was wondering, I just wanted clarification on our last-
Motion?
Motion. I just wanted to make sure that the motion was to remand it back so that way they could re-present under the Lee County, but not that we are actually accepting that Lee County takes jurisdiction over it. Not Lee County Commissioners, but the Lee County Plan takes jurisdiction.
Okay, I can show you the statute.
Well, here, I'll make it simple for you. The county was, county, the council was silent on that part. All we did was say that we were going to allow them to apply under the Lee County Comp Plan. And whatever conclusions anyone wants to draw from that, go right ahead.
Okay, but we're not saying that that is the de facto rules.
Council did not say that.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so that can still be determined later.
That was my question.
There you go. Okay, good. All right, Audrey, you ready for the first reading, sir?
Absolutely. This is the first reading of the following ordinance and the next two ordinance do go neck to neck. This is an ordinance establishing Benita Landing Community Development District, Development District pursuant to Section 190.005, Subsection 2, Florida statutes, providing for the establishment of the community development district, describing the external boundaries of the district, naming the initial members of the Board of Supervisors, naming the district, providing that the city of Benita Springs may not and shall not modify or delete any provision of the district charter set forth in Sections 190.006 through 190.041, Florida statutes, providing for conflict and severability, providing for effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance was advertised. We do not have a copy of the affidavit of publication. I have reviewed the proof and it is legally sufficient. When the clerk does receive the affidavit of publication, we will add it to the file. The next hearing will be on March 2nd, 2016, on this ordinance. At that time, council will hold the actual hearing to review the petition, pursue it to the state statute to determine whether the petition meets the statutory criteria for establishment of a district. At this time, we have Greg Urbansik, who is representing this application. He's an attorney, if you do wish to hear from him. I want to point out that the Benita Landing CDD is a brand-new CDD that will be located out in Section 2. The next ordinance that we're going to be talking about will have to occur first in order because that's the contraction ordinance to provide the space to create the CDD. This area already has a CDD, and so there's a contraction to remove it from that CDD and create this as its own CDD.
All right, all right. Is there, is public comment on this?
There is public comment because of the way the statute works.
Thank you very much. Okay, and did you, did you want to give any comment or presentation at this time or no?
Thank you. Greg Urbansik, on behalf of Lennar, the petitioner, just here to answer any questions you might have. I know we're going to have a full hearing on, in March, so we'll be ready to present everything at that time, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions then.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody have anything now?
I do.
Good, Bill.
Audrey, have we already, this one's been in the newspaper?
Yes, sir.
Well, I happened to see that and it's very difficult to, the diagram that you have here is excellent, but what is posted in the newspaper, I couldn't tell you where it was. This is very good. The one in the newspaper, I couldn't find it or try to understand it, got what it was, but the print was just terrible from news press.
Okay, all right.
I have the proof.
I'm not suggesting on your side, you didn't print that, they did. Maybe we could get a refund.
I do want to point out that the petitioner is required to also pay for the advertisement so that they would get the refund.
Why not? Fine with me.
I'll offer that.
All right, any other questions? All right, we'll go to public comment now, thank you. Anyone, a member of the public wishing to speak to this item and this item alone, please come forward. Okay, and council, what's your pleasure? Would you like to send us a second?
Motion to second.
We have a motion and then we have a second? What, oh, you have, somebody wants to talk? Oh, sorry. That's okay, come on up.
Vicky Olson, 23710 Murano Court, Benita Springs. I'm here on behalf of the Coconut Road West Neighborhood Coalition. We're back. Anyway, first of all, I apologize for having to use my sunglasses, but my indoor glasses are out of commission this morning, so. We strongly endorse LPA member Fred Forbes' recommendation to-
This is, this has got to do with a community, a CDD that's being formed out of East Benita Beach Road?
Oh, then I'm out of order, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll wait.
You can come talk later.
Can I come later?
Yeah, sure. I'll let you know. Okay, so there we go. We have, is there a motion and a second? To send to a second reading?
Yes, there is.
There's a motion and a second, we'll say. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slapp.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Okay.
I'll read the next ordinance. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 08-02 enacted by the city of Benita Springs, Florida on February 20th, 2008, establishing the East Benita Beach Road Community Development District, among other matters, to contract the external boundaries of the district and describe the revised external boundaries of the district, providing for the severability and providing for an effective date. This ordinance has not been advertised yet because it goes under a separate section, a different section of the advertisement requirements, so first, public comments are not taken during this time on this ordinance. This is the one where you would need to do the contractions so you could create the other ordinance when the time comes after review of the petition, review of the petition on March 2, 2016. The ordinance will be advertised and scheduled for your March 2nd, 2016, meeting.
Okay. Council, you have any questions? We'll go to, is there public comment on this as well now? No? Okay, would you like to send us a second?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to second, send to a second reading. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slapp.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay, we're to item 10, a public hearing on the year.
This one's not me.
So, not you?
It's not, well, I guess-
It's got to be somebody. Somebody better step up here. Hey, there she is.
Good afternoon. We'd like to have Dr. Margaret Banyan with Florida Gulf Coast University come forward for a presentation. This is a public hearing and public comment is welcome.
Margaret, how are you?
Good morning. I'm well, thank you.
Oh, good.
So, as we get the PowerPoint set up, I want to say we're pleased to have here with us today our team that helped to produce the report. So I'm with Florida Gulf Coast University and we have Shelley Johnson with Insight and Alexis Crespo with Waldrop Engineering. So what we're going to do today is kind of go through the presentation and answer any questions that you have about the year review. So, first slide, of course, is just what is the evaluation and appraisal review? Again, we've talked to you before about this is a process required every seven years by the state. The last time Benita Springs went through this process was approximately 10 years ago due to some of the changes in the state schedule for amendments, or not for amendments, but for the review. So this process really is to kind of look to see where Benita Springs has been historically, kind of what are the trends, some of those population, some of those are population trends, et cetera, that I'll talk about a little bit later. I also do want to clarify and emphasize that there are no changes to the comprehensive plan that are being made today. So as part of this process, you are not adopting any-
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Yes. I will say it again and maybe one more time if I need to. As part of this process, there are no changes to the comprehensive plan today. This is simply a review of your comprehensive plan. So you're not recommending any changes- So, you're not recommending any changes, you're not necessarily weighing in on some of the options that you would like to see. You're looking at our review. That's pretty much summarizes what you're, we're doing here today.
Thank you.
So, the goal for this meeting is to have you look at the ear notification letter. That ear notification letter is, says to the state, yes, we recognize that there's state-mandated changes that are required, and that we would potentially go through those changes in the next year. You do have that letter as part of your packet and as part of the green sheet, so that you can see what it says. So, again, I kind of want to go through a little bit about, more in context, is that the report that you have in front of you that we delivered does not have to go to the state. So, the state only is requiring that letter. It does not require any backup documentation. If you choose, of course, you can send additional backup documentation, but you are not required to do so. So, the goal for today is again to have you look at the ear notification letter and recognize that there's state-mandated changes that are required, and to answer any questions you may have about our review. The optional amendments that are in the review really are an opportunity for a future conversation. So, if you choose to look at the comprehensive plan in the future, those optional amendments or the optional recommendations are to just, they're a guidepost and as a beginning point for your conversation. They're certainly not the last word. And we really emphasized in the LPA meeting that we think it's very important that you have a lot of public input on those optional amendments. And in addition to that, any state-required amendments, you won't produce those today. You still have a year to do any state-required amendments, and there should be public input on those state amendments as well. Okay? Now, moving past the first slide. So, so briefly, I'm going to go through some of those changing conditions, and then we're going to turn it over to Alexis, and she's going to talk about some additional of the state-required changes, as well as some things that have happened with annexation. And then Shelley will end our presentation and kind of give you a big context about what the review, the purpose for the review. Okay, so first thing we really do start with is population. The population is based on estimates from Bieber, Bureau of Economic and Business Research, and the Schimberg Center for Housing Studies. So, what they do is, of course, they look at the census, they use other estimates from Bieber, and they project out what the population will be. 2040 was the time that, that sort of the projection timeline, that's how far Bieber and Schimberg projects out. So, that's the date that we also chose, 25 years from now. They do not do seasonal estimates. So, the seasonal estimates, there's no real great methodology to do seasonal estimates. So, we triangulated. We used estimates from the MPO study. We also used estimates in terms of trends from what it looked like the current seasonal population was. So, seasonal is a little difficult, just because you're really looking at trends, and there's no hard and fast rule about how you would do those estimates. All of those estimates, though, I want to say for seasonal, were pretty consistent. So, we felt comfortable with this, with this estimate, is that by 2040, you would have a seasonal population of approximately 42,000. I should mention, as we mentioned before, that it looks like the fastest-growing portion of the population is people over 75. That makes sense, those are the baby boomers. In 25 years, that's the tail end of the baby boomers, which would be turning 75 at that point. Okay, we also looked at kind of business trends, and where the kind of industry is going in the city. The top, of course, is retail trade, followed by arts and entertainment, and then healthcare and social assistance. All right, we also looked at household income, as well as unemployment. The, the good news is that you've got a higher than, the median and the average of income is higher than the rest of the state. And in addition, your people below poverty level is very consistent with the state. If you have any questions about these things, we can go back. I'm trying to get to the meat of the proposal here. So, in terms of housing, we also look at housing stock. We look at housing, median housing price. Of course, single families, somewhat more expensive than condos. And the median gross rent is a little over $1,000. And then, we'll also look at cost burden, and what cost burden means is what percentage of the population is paying more than 30% of their income for housing. So, for the city, that was 39%, and elderly, 13%. It looks like you've got 56% of your housing stock is in single-family, and then the remainder is in multifamily and mobile homes. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Alexis. I'll be back to do a couple slides after we talk about this part.
Thank you. Good morning, Alexis Crespo, with Waldrop Engineering. Another key part of the analysis that we prepared in order to finalize the report was a look at your vacant lands, what lands are available to accommodate the future growth that is projected through 2040. And so what we found, using GIS data available to us, was the city has approximately 3,000 acres of vacant lands that are available to accommodate new residential housing, commercial uses and services for that anticipated population growth over the next long-range planning term. What we did find is that 15,000 units can be accommodated based upon that acreage when you look at the acreage in comparison to the future land use map and the maximum densities permitted on those properties. So, the 15,000 units is sufficient to accommodate the population growth projected through 2040. However, something we've noted in our report is that much of that available density and those lands that are available to accommodate new residential growth are within your commercial future land use category, which are along your major arterial roadways, may not be appropriate locations for future residential growth. And you also have some density allocated to your industrial future land use category. So, while there is sufficient acreage available to accommodate population growth, the city may need to analyze over future years where that density should be best located based upon where people want to live within the city. We also looked at the annexations that have occurred since the last year in 2009. What we did not do, and what you will not find in this report, is any commentary, recommendations upon your pending annexations. We're very aware, you've got some pending annexations that require further review by staff and council. This is not any kind of commentary on what you're dealing with in terms of those projects. This is simply an analysis of how many acres have you annexed since the last year? Where are those lands located? Are they properly serviced by infrastructure? And is the city's boundary growing in a logical manner? So, what we found is that since 2009, the city has annexed just under 300 acres. That's a 1% increase in the total land area, which is not significant. So, the city's not rapidly annexing, expanding its boundaries, which is generally seen as a, as a good thing. You want it to be logical as you take those applications in. The majority of the properties are within the western portion of the city, along Coconut Road, within the Pelican Landing DRI. These lands are well-serviced by roadway infrastructure and utilities, so we're not sprawling out into rural areas without infrastructure, which is also something positive you want to see when you analyze your annexations. And then the, the big change stemming from those annexations was the creation of a new future land use category to accommodate some of those lands known as the Coconut Village designation. This is just your current future land use map, and we've just shown a box. The annexations, again, are in the northwestern portion of your city, and are generally in the same area to the north of Coconut Road. We also looked at changes to Florida statutes, because as part of this process, we need to identify which portions of your comprehensive plan are no longer in compliance with the current regulations at the state level. There were some significant changes to Florida statutes in 2011 through the Community Planning Act, which was passed by House Bill 7207. Most significant change that we've noted throughout the report is changes to concurrency requirements. The state still requires concurrency requirements, meaning minimum levels of service that the city must deliver in terms of water, sewer, drainage, and solid waste. However, through the Community Planning Act, it allowed local governments to create optional concurrency for transportation, schools, and other areas such as parks and recs. So, the city is now facing the option to maintain concurrency for those areas, such as transportation, or remove those from their comprehensive plan. This is not a decision you're making today as reviewing this report, or something to consider over coming years, how you want to handle concurrency within the city. I'll just note that should the city elect to maintain the optional concurrency requirements for transportation, schools, parks and recs, that they would need to integrate some options into the comprehensive plan to create some flexibility and different ways of handling deficiencies with level of service. So, we've noted that in our report. I've noted some additional changes on the slide. These are more housekeeping items. Florida Administrative Code 9J5 was repealed, so references throughout your comp plan should remove those references. Also, Department of Community Affairs is no longer in existence, and we would recommend changing that to State Land Planning Agency, which is the current term. And then also addressing throughout the new expedited state review process, the new EAR review process that's in place, really just housekeeping items to be current with the changes from 2011. And then the last slide I have is the annexation review. I've covered most of this. These recommended changes are not state-mandated, these are optional. These are things you can work on over the next several years. What we've recommended is that you have some Lee County future land use designations still in place. We know you're dealing with those actively right now, and over time, you would want your, all lands within the city to have city designations. So, again, something longer-term to work on. What we also did recommend, which could be a shorter-term item, is to simply update all the maps throughout your comprehensive plan that don't depict the current city boundary with those additional 292 acres. A lot of your maps don't have those lands included, and should be updated accordingly. And if you don't have any questions on that, I'll turn it over to Margaret.
So, I'm back for a few more slides. What I want to just share with you and just remind you is the public participation that we went through prior to the review, prior, and as you know, we had three workshops. So, the first was on September 17th. The purpose of that workshop was to really have a conversation. Everybody who attended would remember, we had people sitting around in tables having a conversation about what are the important things that we should be looking for. We then used those questions to frame the online survey. So, the online survey followed that first workshop, and that was open for two months. So, that online survey helped to get feedback from people who may not attend a workshop or who may not have been in town at the time of those public, of the public workshops. And then we had two additional public workshops, one in October and another in January. And we continued to get refinement of issues and feedback from the public in those workshops. As you probably have already heard, there were some key themes that really came out of that work. And we started with the framework that we talked to you about, which was your strategic priorities. So, we took the council's strategic priorities and looked at those in terms of quality of life, strengthening the infrastructure, looking at your downtown, as well as economic development. And then, kind of weaving in some of the public input, it was very consistent. What we heard from the public, and you see in the report, we've did a summary of all of the meetings, it was very consistent in terms of what the public was also telling us throughout the survey, that quality of life is important, that small-town charm is important, that environmental and water resources are important, that infill and development downtown was reinforced a good strategy that you had already identified. And that housing diversity is an additional item that really came through strongly in the public input, as well as the transportation. And multimodal transportation specifically is something you've talked a lot about, and we continue to hear through the public input. And then clean industry was another item that, that really came through and kind of shown through. So, you can see with that list, there's very consistent feedback. There was no big surprise from the public input process in terms of the, in terms of your strategic priorities. So, we used that to conduct the review. So, the reason why we go through these things is because I want to share with you the various lenses that we used in the review. And I want to say and reemphasize, in our review, we knew that you were not going to be making any changes to the comprehensive plan.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
So, this review, again, is a, is a first cut, and looking at changes that you may consider in the future. Even the state mandated changes will not be done for another year, and not be required for another year. And, and this review, I just want to say a couple words, is that, you know, as a, as acting as a consultant, you want to hear all of the information that we would have. So, we didn't hold back. We know that there's some items that may be controversial. We used these lenses to go through each element. So, you want to hear all of your options. And I think that's the job as a consultant, is to not give you 50% and not give you the 50% that some elements of the community want, and the 25 that the other elements want. We conducted a full review, and it was also an independent review. So, in terms of any interaction, we listened to everybody that we met with, and we listened to all the public input. So, it was fully independent. Any glory or any blame should rest with our team, and we'll take the glory first. So, then I want to share with you sort of the, the different lenses. The first lens, of course, was what are the state mandated requirements? And you'll see in the Appendix B of your report, there's four different columns. One is no comment, the other is state mandated changes, the other is annexation-related amendments, and then the final is optional. So, the first cut, of course, is what's state mandated. So, you can clearly see, really, what is the state requiring you to do. The second cut is annexation, and then the third cut, in terms of the optional amendments, there was various lenses, and the first was looking at integration of all of the elements. And Shelley's going to talk about this. I think it'll become clear in her part of the presentation, how this works. So, how do the elements work together? What do they say together? Because there's different kind of subject areas that interweave throughout your comprehensive plan. Transportation is a really good example. You see transportation in many different elements. So, it's important to kind of understand, how does your comp plan work as a whole, and how is it integrated? Then the second cut there is, does it duplicate unnecessarily? Are there items in one section of the plan that duplicate in another? The danger, of course, is if you start looking at one section of the plan, does it conflict with another element of the plan? In terms of regulatory language, we made comments on every, every time it looked like there was regulatory language, we made a comment on it. It wasn't intended to say you should or you must change this regulatory language, but it was optional. If you want to move some of the regulation to the Land Development Code, we noted it. And then, we also noted where there was timeframes that were no longer appropriate, where the timeframes have passed. We also noted where you've accomplished certain things, that you could remove that language because you've accomplished it. And then finally, our last cut, and certainly not the least important, was the public priorities. We went through each element to say, your public is telling us this, and if you want to respond to these public comments, here is some ideas about how you might change, or you might consider that element. And again, the optional recommendations are a guidepost for a future discussion. You are not required to make those amendments within the next year. Any of the optional changes, you have ultimate flexibility about how you want to approach those. And so I'm going to turn it over to Shelley, and she can talk about sort of what the big picture in terms of the elements were.
Shelley Johnson with EnSite. Nice to see you all again. Okay, so, the way I've kind of organized this is I'm going to kind of give you a big overview of the state mandated amendments and the annexation-related amendments as they occur throughout the entire comprehensive plan. And then we'll go through each element, element by element, and kind of highlight the optional amendments that we've identified. So, some of this is a little repetitive with what both Alexis and Margaret have already talked about, but generally, in the state mandated amendments, a lot of housekeeping things, removing references to the Florida Administrative Code 9J5, which was repealed, and other references to the state concurrency requirements that Alexis touched on that are no longer required. Understand that if, in those optional concurrency, in the concurrency options that you now have, what has to be done is if you choose to remove that concurrency requirement, you still have to incorporate tools and techniques that you might use to manage concurrency. So, there will be some work with regard to concurrency, one way or the other. And then, the report also needs to just be updated in terms of making references to specific reports and plans that have been done kind of separately from the comp plan, but are important to incorporate as part of the comprehensive plan. Examples are your stormwater master plan and your parks and recreation master plan. And then finally, just kind of a minor thing, is the evaluation and appraisal report is now called the evaluation and appraisal review. So, the reference to that document throughout the comp plan would need to be updated as well. With the annexation-related amendments, as Alexis mentioned, the annexed properties, the 292 acres are not reflected in the future land use designations in the comp plan today. So, that should be considered as something to update. And coinciding with that is updating the map series, the maps that are associated with the, really through all the elements, there are a number of maps. And that would include the future land use map, changing the boundary to include the annexed properties, but other maps too. You know, data changes. It gets better each year. So, you have maps like your well field protection map, your flood plains map, coastal high-hazard area. Those are all maps that should be looked at, really almost annually, to just make sure that they're reflecting the most current data that's available. And then finally, amending the density schedule and some of the transfer density rights tables that are in the comp plan to include the Coconut Village land use designation. That's not reflected in the plan right now. So, the first element we're going to talk about is the future land use element, and as far as the optional amendments go. And first and foremost is generally just looking at supporting the infill and redevelopment vision that was expressed to us, not only through the strategic priorities of the city council, but also through the community input that we received. And what we're recommending is that you look at reallocating density. So, as Alexis and Margaret have stated, there is adequate density available for the continued growth of the city through 2040. What we're suggesting here is that you relook at how that density is allocated through the various land use designations that you have, and that the focus might be on concentrating densities or moving some densities around to help promote and support infill and redevelopment. So, in particular is the old US 41 redevelopment overlay, which is the downtown, and I'll just call it the downtown for reference. One of the things that we observed in looking at that is there really is no clear vision. There's really not a vision statement for the downtown, and that's pretty important to have, if this is such a focal point for the city, to clearly, you know, show what your goal is. And so, an example, you know, that I've kind of come up with for a vision, just as an idea, is it could state that the old US 41 overlay is the mixed-use heart of Benita Springs, where residential, commercial, employment, and civic uses are all present and integrated. So, this is kind of giving you a bigger picture of what the ultimate goal is. Then you could have policies that support that. You talk about being pedestrian-friendly. They talk about urban parks and plazas, mixed-use buildings, a variety of housing types. And then also some policies that talk about infrastructure. How does the infrastructure support that form of redevelopment in the downtown? So, and it's saying that, you know, one of the things that Margaret touched on is the interrelatedness of all of your elements. What we kind of observe now in the comp plan is that each element is sort of standalone, and they don't relate very well to one another in terms of supporting the overall vision for the city. So, using downtown as an example, if your goal is to promote a mixed-use destination for the town center, then there needs to be infrastructure policies in the infrastructure element that support that form of growth of infrastructure, for example, or policies in the environmental element that talk about urban forestry and urban plazas, that kind of thing. And so, you can start to see how all of these elements need to sort of make that connection a little bit stronger. A couple of other observations is that height limits right now are established in the comprehensive plan. Typically, heights are considered a regulatory tool. It's purely optional. You can keep it in the comprehensive plan. I think there's been some strong public support for doing that, and that's fine. It's just, you know, our observation is that it's typically a regulatory tool, and something for further discussion. Some of the input that we received from the community was that they would like to see a beautification of some of the commercial corridors in the city. So, there could be design and aesthetic policies that are included in the future land use element that talk about beautifications, maybe special landscape treatments, architectural standards. It could be those kinds of things that could start to be talked about and envisioned in the comprehensive plan. And then, as I mentioned, the map series needs to be updated. Moving on to the transportation element, the biggest discussion, I guess, really is the determination for transportation concurrency, and whether you want to retain the concurrency as it is, or create new tools and techniques that would then need to be incorporated into the comp plan. It's recommended that you incorporate your complete streets resolution in the comp plan, and that you establish a process to develop integrated land use and transportation planning. So, what we're talking about here is, again, that interrelatedness between the various elements of the plan. So, going back to downtown, if you're promoting complete streets, how does the transportation, how do the policies of the transportation element support that? And then finally, really just, there's a lot of emphasis in the transportation plan to traffic, and it's really talking about vehicular traffic. What we're recommending is that those policies be modified to talk more about transportation planning, which is more of a multimodal approach to transportation planning, so. Okay, the next element is the housing element. Some of the optional amendments that we would suggest looking at really deal with neighborhood quality, housing for young professionals and workers, maintaining minimum maintenance standards and conservation of existing housing stock, fair share and community balance, and energy conservation. And really, what we're talking about here, you know, the city is not a home builder, but really what you are are managers of the programs and the policies that guide the private sector development. So, some of those policies, what we're recommending is just to further strengthen the policies that deal with fair housing and maintenance and health code minimums. Next is the infrastructure element. Again, in the infrastructure element, there sort of lacks a primary goal of what infrastructure, what are you trying to accomplish with your infrastructure element? And so, what we're recommending is that a goal be created that really states the overlying purpose of providing public facilities and services to serve the existing population as well as new growth. And then, again, tying your infrastructure policies and goals to your land use goals so that they support one another. There needs to be a reference to the city's water supply plan, and in this particular element, we did find a lot of duplication, and really just sort of a bit of a disorganization of the element. So, there just needs to be really more housekeeping, some housekeeping that needs to be done in that element. The conservation coastal management element, again, lacks sort of an overarching goal for conservation in this element, and what we're recommending is that there should be a general goal that talks about conservation as the most cost-effective strategy to continuing the availability of our natural resources. And then integrating, you know, how that could be done through support of, for example, multimodal or mixed-use forms of development. So, you can see how these all start to tie back to the infrastructure element and the land use element. We would recommend also promoting sustainable development policies. Examples would be, could include things like low-impact development initiatives, the use of porous pavement, for example. So, using some alternative construction materials is one example, some zero-scape principles is another example, and then some discussion on alternative energy as well. The recreation and open space element. The most important thing in this element is that there are level of service standards established for community parks and regional parks only, but not for any other form of recreational component. So, soccer fields, baseball fields, tot lots, those kinds of things. There should be level of service standards established for all forms of parks in your comprehensive plan. Additionally, we're recommending some policies that further direct funding and joint use agreements. The cost of infrastructure, obviously, is very expensive. More and more on a national level, we're seeing jurisdictions working together to provide various services to their communities, and so that the cost of maintenance even, for example, is kept under control. We're recommending adding some policies that address the citywide benefits of parks, such as the economic feasibility, the community need, and the evolving trends in recreation, and then again, sustaining partnerships in the development of parks. And those partnerships could be, you know, multi-jurisdictional, or we could just be talking about partnerships with various neighborhoods, so that you have a clear understanding of what various neighborhoods within your city are looking for or desire in terms of parks and recreation. The intergovernmental coordination element, we're recommending just to revise Goal 1, to address intergovernmental coordination more broadly. Right now, it's very specific. It talks about coordination with the school district, for example. It could be just more generally, so that, you know, you have a new jurisdiction that's now Villages of Astera, like it's not addressed in there. So, if the general goal is more broad in its nature, then it would provide for opportunities for intergovernmental coordination in a more broad sense, a more general sense. There's a lot of duplicative policies with the school facilities element in this element, and that's really just a housekeeping thing, is, you know, where do those go, and try to eliminate the duplicity. And then also considering interlocal service boundary agreements with the adjacent communities. Obviously, as I mentioned, there's, you know, Villages of Astera is a new community. There should be some opportunities for the coordination with them. The capital improvements element. So, this element really, again, kind of missing an overall goal that we would recommend there be developed, a goal that talks about the total fiscal capability of the city, including expenditures, revenues, taxes, other funding sources, financial management and capital programming, and budgeting. And an example goal that is really all-encompassing is from the City of Gainesville I'd like to share with you. And what their primary goal in their capital improvement element says is, "To provide and maintain in a timely fashion adequate, efficient, reliable, equitable, and environmentally sound public facilities that are financially feasible." So, you can see it kind of sets the stage for a lot of different policies, dealing with a lot of different issues in terms of capital improvements. It also ties, going back to that interrelatedness of the other elements, you can see how this sort of sets the stage for expenditures that may affect other elements within the comp plan. And then also, updating your five-year capital improvement schedule in this element on an annual basis is highly recommended. So, really what we're talking about here is governmental transparency, so that you're being held accountable. There's some accountability of how public dollars are being spent. It also gives you a little bit of a strength in being able to say no to things that maybe just don't fit into your schedule of improvements. The public participation, monitoring, updating, and evaluation procedures element, this element is somewhat administrative in nature, but generally, we have three recommendations that consider moving all the procedural information to an appendix and then updating it, developing some policies that would address the broader public participation goals, and then consider one public process for all procedures. There's multiple procedures for different public processes right now in that element, and we think that that could be cleaned up with just one procedure that would work for The public school facilities element, this is no longer concurrency with public schools is no longer a requirement. You can choose to retain this element and update the concurrency policies with different tools and techniques if you wish. If you do that, one of the things we would recommend is to update the census data that's found in that element, but the other option that you have is to simply remove the element in its entirety. And then finally, the definitions section, we're recommending just updating the definitions and housing them all in the definitions section. There are definitions found throughout the elements of the comprehensive plan. It's, what we're recommending is that they all be found in one place, and then those definitions be updated to make sure they're consistent with state statute, and then also to reconcile those definitions between the comp plan and the Land Development Code so that you are assured consistency with your definitions. I think that completes my presentation. I'm going to let Margaret come back up here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, just to round things out, I wanted to share with you the LPA recommendations you do have in front of you, but to summarize, the LPA recommended to move forward with the state mandated amendments over the next year, as well as the year notification letter to the state. LPA also, by consensus, you heard from Mr. Forbes this morning, that they wanted to workshop the different elements, or to just consider those optional elements, or the optional recommendations, potentially by element, and they were going to work on a schedule for that. So, at this point, I'm sure after you hear from public input, you've met the requirements for the letter. You're free to vote on this today, or we do have another meeting scheduled two weeks from now if you want to reconsider and vote on it at a later point.
Just to clarify, the vote would be just to transmit the letter?
The letter.
Which is the report itself, with no changes to the comprehensive plan?
Yes, just the letter is all that's required. The report you can retain for your own, the city's purpose. So, again, you would just be voting on the letter.
So, it's just the process?
Correct. Yes. I'm here for questions.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and turn the lights up now, and we'll take public comment, and then we'll come back to you if we have any questions. Would that be all right?
Yep, very good. Thank you.
I know it says questions up there, but... Okay, at this time, we'll take public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak at this time, please come forward. Specific to the... Our ears.
Okay, once again, sorry, I jumped again. Vicky Olson, 23710 Morano Court, Benita Springs. Just speaking on behalf of the Coconut Road West Neighborhood Coalition, and I'm very glad to hear the assurances today that you're only voting on the letter, to transmit the letter to the State of Florida. But just as a precautionary measure, I'd like to make a short statement. We strongly endorse the LPA member Fred Forbes' recommendation to the city council not to recommend any optional related changes to the comp plan until it holds a series of public workshops to determine which of the recommendations should be pursued. As to the recommendations regarding Week's fish camp and Raptor Bay, we ask that we are given ample notice when these issues will be discussed at the next LPA meeting. We hope that the council would simply... We hope that the council would simply transmit to Tallahassee only the Florida law-mandated recommendations to the comp plan, and that the LPA's plan to conduct a number of workshops to determine which of the optional annexation-related recommendations should be considered for implementation only after public input. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Rick Steinmeier. It sounds like we have a whole 'nother year to worry about making changes to our comp plan. Is that right? Sounds like it to me.
Sounds like it to me. Yep. Next speaker.
Yeah, I was just going to say pretty much the same thing. Keep it simple. Thanks for the light.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you. Keep it simple. I think I heard from the public kind of what they want. We've had a good tradition through the years. I don't know why this always comes up, like, right before an election, right, Mayor? Because I was part of the year process, the last one, and it was right before an election. So they might want to reconsider that, for sure, because that always makes it difficult, and maybe start the process earlier. I heard some good things here, and I want to congratulate Margaret and her team for hearing from the public, and kind of like our financial audit we get every year, they kind of make recommendations, how you could do things better. And I thank you for the work that you've done, and I thank you for the work that you've done. Keep it simple, send the letter, and then y'all just workshop each element as you go. I'm just starting to remember, I mean, memorize the comp plan we had, so don't change it too much. It's not, you know, there's a lot of stuff in there. Thank you, guys and lady. Appreciate it.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Walter McCarthy. I'm a resident of Benita Springs. I live in the Bay Cedar Community in Pelican Landing, but I come to you today as a, behalf of the Village of Astero, your neighbor to the north. The Village Council, on February 10th, adopted, by unanimous vote, a resolution instructing staff to maintain oversight to monitor the, what we'll call the Pelican Landing/Raptor Bay process. They further instructed us to testify as appropriate in hearings here of particular interest to the Village of Astero or high-hazard area impacts, evacuation impacts, traffic, roads, capacity issues, among others. With your permission out, I'll give a copy of the resolution to the clerk for...
I think we have that, but you can go ahead.
As to the action today, we trust that the council will simply transmit to Tallahassee only the Florida law-mandated recommendations to the comp plan, and to follow the LPA's recommendation to conduct public hearings to visit the other issues, which are the optional annexation issues. And I thank you very much for your opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Diane Frazine, Hickory Boulevard. I'd like just to ask that you send the letter to the state acknowledging you'll make the state-mandated changes, and that you send the letter only, not the report. There's no reason to send that report, you just need the letter. Secondly, I'd like you to, in my opinion, I'd like you to disregard the rest of the optional amendments at this time, as they're not in the best interest of your residents. Three, if you hold any public workshops in the future on this, that you hold them when you have the largest amount of your residents here to attend, which is November through April, not September and October. Lastly, as recommended by the LPA, correct the maps that are inconsistent with our comp plan, and do this as soon as possible, not later, but sooner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Hello. Good morning.
Morning.
Almost afternoon. Ann Kramer in Benita Springs. I live in the Pelican Landing Community, and I, too, am concerned with the Raptor Bay issue. We've run into some height restriction concerns there, and in looking at the comp plan, my request to the council would be to maintain the minimum heights, the maximum heights, and not to leave this to chance. You know, if this has changed from being in the comprehensive plan, that allows the ability for a persuasive sales pitch to occur and perhaps change what the residents want in terms of keeping that small-city charm. And it's understood that in this process, you're going to have to acknowledge these lands that have been annexed into the city. In doing that, personally, I would like to ask that there are no changes made at this time to the land use designations, and that any notice and any studies that are given to that, any meetings that occur where you have resident input, as a prior speaker said, please give us adequate notice to that, because we would like to participate in what's going to happen there. There is a big concern with the land use designations and using the proper maps, and we would hope that from here forward, incorporating the correct, most recent maps, particularly to have to do with the coastal high-hazard area, that that will, we will have full awareness of those issues in the future. So I thank you, and we look forward to this process as it goes forward, and if it takes more than a year for some of these issues, then that's fine, because these are important things to our community. But we do want that small-town charm, so, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. For the record, Nicole Johnson, here on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida. And first, we want to thank the consulting team, Margaret and her team, for doing really a tremendous job on this evaluation and appraisal review report. I've been through a lot of years in my almost 19 years with the Conservancy, and this has been one of the most thorough, with more public involvement than I've ever seen. And thank you also to the city for deciding to do this very comprehensive year process. I think that there's a tremendous amount of good work here, and certainly, the LPA, I think, made a good decision in moving forward immediately with those things that you have to do, the state-mandated requirements. And that's appropriate, but we don't want to lose sight of all of the other good stuff that's in there. So really would encourage you to start a workshopping process, start looking at some of those optional elements. And one thing that I would ask you consider, I don't know if it can be part of this initial round of changes, but one of the things that struck me in reading the report was how little conservation land you actually have designated in the city. It's about 1% of the city. And that's because when you go to your future land use map, you have significant preservation tracts, public lands dedicated for conservation, that aren't actually designated on the flume as conservation. The Hidden Cypress Preserve, Pine Lakes Preserve, so the Conservancy would recommend that you get those public parcels that have been set aside for conservation, actually designated as conservation in the flume, and that might be something that you can do during this first round of changes. And just wanted to point out, as you're going through your workshops, which let's not let this year just stay on the shelf and get stale, but some of the good things that could come out of that, and one thing I wanted to point out, because we're dealing with this issue in Collier County, the team recommended that the idea of, they call it urban forestry, but really, I think what it is, is preservation of native habitat, wildlife habitat in urban areas, creating some policies that really strengthen the fact that you want to have urban green space, urban habitat within the city limits. And I think that that's going to be something that's very important, especially with build-out, with infill and redevelopment. What we're seeing in Collier County is that preserves, conservation easement-protected planted preserves are being targeted for additional development, and that's something that can really change the whole character of a community. So strengthening policies like that, as Mr. Forbes talked about earlier, looking at some of the pedestrian, bicycle-friendly, smart streets-type policies, I think are good. So let's not shelve everything else, let's move forward, state-mandated, and get the others rolling, hopefully, within the next couple of months for workshopping.
Dawn Konczakowski. And I forwarded the email that I sent to you guys. I sent it to City Council, or, I'm sorry, to City Clerk, so that she will have all that, if it'll be put on the record, please. So I'm going to spend my time today dealing with specifics. To state that unless anyone has taken the existing comp plan text of our vision and indicated each optional recommendation and its negative effect on each specific goal, objective, or policy that it pertains to, then how can anyone state on the record today that the job the consultants did, including optional amendments, was good or even useful or necessary? I did take each recommendation, copied and pasted it next to the existing comp plan text, and indicated to council exactly how these recommendations would negatively and needlessly affect our plan. I couldn't believe that the consultants, just one example, that the consultants recommended deleting Policy 1125 because it has been completed. That was the excuse. The City Council has never made the zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan. All they've ever done is change the number 34 to 4, but it was recommended in the recommendations to delete it. We want all of the existing and adopted goals, objectives, and policies, land use categories, densities, and intensities found in our plan that are based on adopted data, frameworks, studies, and surveys kept intact as they represent and protect our vision. We want all of the adopted data, frameworks, studies, and surveys kept intact as they represent and protect our vision. Those were recommended to be either removed or put in an appendix. This adopted backup eliminates the need for staff to reinterpret our plan. The backup tells just how the community and the local planning agency in 2002 came up with the plan they came up with. The city gives the local planning agency responsibility over our plan. It is the LPA's job to let us know if updates are required, other than legal changes required by state statutes, not consultants. There has been no proven need to increase densities, intensities, or height limits as they recommend. Once again, the local planning agency members have shown the residents of the city that they have qualifications and knowledge and ability to help guide the City Council in their important decisions to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the majority. At the February 11th, 2016, meeting, the LPA asked the city attorney about having vested rights covered in the comp plan. It is already covered in detail in the comprehensive plan. The dates are specific. What can be vested is specific. I do hope that staff doesn't try to open up an opportunity to amend the vested rights portion of the plan, too, and have it taken out because it's a trap. There is no need for a review or rewrite of the residents' plan. There is no need for the council to spend any more tax dollars to review any further with outside consultants. The LPA members can go through individually the list of optional amendments, and the LPA can make a decision if any of them should have any further consideration. There have been no locally changed conditions and no proven need that would warrant any of the optional recommendations, and there is no need to waste any further time of the LPA or the residents to change a plan that doesn't need changing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And if you would just please, just send the letter to the state. That's all that's required. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward? Take your time, boy.
John West. At the LPA meeting last week, one of the members brought up the subject of zoning and the 3,000 acres that we have left to develop or to think about developing, what to do with it. And I'd like to emphasize again that we've got a high school coming here. We need to have some facilities for housing. The teachers that are coming, I don't know how many kids they're going to be in that school, but probably 1,500, and God knows how many teachers are going to be needing accommodation and so forth. As I mentioned before, at the LPA meeting anyhow, affordable housing has been something that has been left on the back burner. You can call it affordable housing, you can call it workforce housing, but whatever it is, there isn't enough of it. And $1,000 a month to rent a place in Benita Springs, you are lucky if you can find it for $1,000, because rents are going up, and it's something that we've kind of let slide. Another thing is amenities. Kids are going to want more amenities than they are here in Benita Springs at the moment. I've been talking to some of them. They say there's nothing to do. Well, I don't know, we've got, there's plenty that is available, but apparently, it's not going to be enough for high-school-type kids that are going to come here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward? Seeing none? Okay. Do you have anything else for us, Margaret? Okay, council, do you have any questions for anybody? Entertained a motion?
Well, just quick comment. Very nice job. I know there was criticism all the way around on this, but the work that was produced here is a class piece of work, and I appreciate what was done. Thank you very much.
Yes.
And I'll make the motion that we transmit the letter to the state.
Have the motion to transmit the letters, or second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Margaret, thank you so much. You and your team did an absolutely phenomenal job. I knew it wasn't going to be easy, and I knew that was, well, actually, on paper, sometimes it looks a lot easier than it was, but thank you so much for your patience, your professionalism. I'm in awe. Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure, and all your team, everybody, thank you so much. Anybody else? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slatten?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lauper?
Aye.
Okay. I'm working upward here. Okay. We are, too. City attorneys report.
Thank you. The first you have is to consider the Preserve at Oak Creek Bonus Density Contract. You've received in your errata sheet today a copy of the final agreement. I believe that Jay Sweet can explain the different things within that agreement. Vic?
Sure. What we have is, to answer several questions, this was, the reason we passed ordinance we passed a while ago was because this, we saw how this was going. This agreement was already in the process of being formulated, and we realized that we needed to have an ongoing ordinance that would make this easier in the future. That being said, what we have here, excuse me, is an agreement that addresses three principal issues, the things that they will do for which they will get credit. One, they're going to provide some drainage. Two, they're going to provide access to the creek with a kayak launch and parking. And then the last one, of course, they're going to relocate the Dixie Moon or the Good Red Building. One of the elements of this, and I'll go through and explain it a little bit, is that we have a multiplier. And the reason we have a multiplier is in order for there to be fairness to achieve what we're trying to achieve. An example is the drainage. If you notice on the application, in round numbers, they're going to spend about $115,000, and we're saying they should get a credit equal to five times that. And the reason is pretty simple. They're using their land, we don't have to buy it, they're going to maintain it. All of those things which would cost us a lot of money to do, they're going to do, plus they're going to put the improvements in. And when staff looked at that, if we were in a situation where we had to go acquire property, especially through domain, we would pay much more than that multiplier. And so as we looked at those things, we felt that... looked at those things, we felt that, in that instance, to be appropriate. The same thing was true in the kayak application. A couple of things. There's only a few spots where you're gonna get access to the creek and the river. And so, since they're limited, and since they were providing public access, again, they are maintaining it, they are maintaining the parking, they're indemnifying the city for, you know, those maintenance obligations and so forth. Again, staff felt that was inappropriate multiplier to use for them. You'll notice, though, that on the Dixie Moon, Goodbred building, we used a much, much lower multiplier, 1.5, and that was also done by design. The applicant originally would have liked to have a higher multiplier, and staff held to their guns and said, no, we didn't think it was appropriate. And the reason we didn't think it's appropriate is that we think there's many opportunities to how they could address that building. They could address it on their own property, they could have done it several different ways. Yes, we want them to do it, and we want to encourage it, but also being cognizant of our responsibilities to be responsible for the city and how we treat bonus density and so forth. We felt that any multiplier above 1.5 would have been too high, and ultimately, they agreed with us, and there's where we're at today. So, I can answer more questions. That's just sort of a brief overview. Do understand, though, that this was in negotiation prior to the change of the ordinance. That's the reason, if you look at that ordinance, that there was an exception for this, because we knew this was going forward. But as we processed this, staff realized that there's a lot of good opportunities throughout the city for this to happen, and we wanted to codify that as quickly as possible, but not delay this.
Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor, if I just might add too, that I wanna make sure that everyone's clear that what is being talked about today is over and above what they are required to do as a developer. And so, the city is gaining additional benefit by the opportunity to have these improvements put in place to the city's benefit, and then obviously, with the bonus density, the developer is receiving something in return as well. And that is providing additional housing downtown, which we've heard multiple times, we need. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions from council? What's your pleasure?
Move forward.
We have a motion in a second?
Yep.
Somewhere around this area? Any other comment? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slata.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longberg.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Okay, item B.
Item- I'm going to request to continue item B for two weeks, to March 2. I had received changes late in the afternoon yesterday, and I have not been able to-
Only a few, right? Twenty-four? Okay, is there, council, is there a motion?
It's motion to approve.
As a motion, a motion to continue this. On a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Slata.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longberg.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Anything else for us? Audrey?
Not at this time, sir.
Good job today. City managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item A is the review of the financial report. We have supplied that to you, and continues to do a great job of providing additional information to council on that and to the public, and we appreciate that. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, just a couple of other items. First off, I wanted to, once again, remind the public, remind the council, that Tool Design, which is the consulting firm working on our Bonita Beach Road Visioning process, will be back in the city. They will have informal office hours on Tuesday, February 23rd, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM here in council chambers. And then again, another public workshop on Thursday, February 25th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM here in council chambers. And that will conclude their visits to the city with regards to public involvement and engagement in this important process. All right? And then, the last thing I have today, is that I'm proud to announce, for the first time publicly, that the Florida Green Building Coalition's Florida Green Local Government Designation, that program has designated the city of Bonita Springs with a gold level certification.
Wonderful.
And that's wonderful. It's good news. And what this means, and this is something the staff has been working on for the last almost two years. City council has certainly been involved in being agreeable to make some of the changes that we've made in the regulations in the city over time. But they also indicate, and this is the Green Building Coalition, they talk about this designation as being important, because it demonstrates the city's commitment to protect and conserve the community's natural resources, enhance the efficiency of government, thus reducing the cost of services to taxpayers, and raising the public awareness about the benefits of environmental stewardship. And I just wanna take this opportunity to particularly thank Jennifer Hagan from Community Development for taking leadership, a serious leadership role in this process, as well as our entire staff involved in producing the documents and producing the answers necessary to complete that application, and once again, to our city council, who provided not only the leadership, but also was responsive to recommendations for changes in city regulations. So, that gold standard will be with us for five years, and we do anticipate that they're actually gonna come down and present something to us formally in the next couple of months. So anyway, thank you, council, thank you, staff, and that concludes my report today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we are two mayor and council member items. Oh, we reviewed the financial report.
We did that.
You did that? Okay, anybody questions? No, no, no? Okay. All right, mayor and council member items. Approved resolution appointing a member to the city of Bonita Springs Art and Public Places Advisory Board.
Yes, please. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Joseph Hemrick to the Art and Public Places Board.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slata.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longberg.
Aye.
Okay, mayor and council member items and reports. Let's start over there at Bill. Bill, what do you got for us, buddy?
I'd just like to say something and thank everybody for their concern for my wife, who has had an interesting circumstance. It started with an ankle, and it wound up with heart, but she's doing fine, and I thank you for all the kind words and encouragement. Thank you.
I'm sorry to hear that, Bill. I didn't know about that. But-
Didn't know about that.
Give her our best, okay?
Okay.
All right. Mike, what you got?
Well, I'd just like to report that I did get a text earlier while we were here, and they are putting trees in the median down on Old 41, so they are coming along. It doesn't look like they're gonna meet the opening of the road tomorrow, like initially planned, cause it's not yet paved, but it looks like it should be done soon.
They just dropping them out of an airplane like they did before, huh?
That'd be pretty cool, but no.
That's what I've been telling people, is that, how are you putting those trees? And who'd decide to do it? I said, we just drop them out of an airplane. Anyway. Peter, what you got?
Yeah, earlier in the meeting, we approved for Cullum's Trail, the plans for the bridge. I did walk that last week, and that is gonna be phenomenal, so great work. City council there, and Cullum, please keep up the fantastic work there. Bill, yes, absolutely. Thoughts and prayers. Continue with your wife. Glad she's on the mend. There is a workshop, as we all know, tonight at the fire station. I encourage everybody to attend, and hats off to Dr. Steve and his wife and the whole community for a fantastic event at the Wonder Gardens. Great job.
Steve, what do you got?
Just, Carl, I just wanna let you know that, you know, it seems like every day's superior landscaping and all that, they've been up and down 41, and so that's good. That's good stuff. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Janet?
Citywide cleanup, Saturday, the 27th, from 9:00 to noon. And for those who are wondering about where do we meet, we meet at the same old place, it's just no building there now. But it's across the street from Riverside Park, and it's always been well attended, and it's neat to see people come out and take pride in the community and help clean her up. So, I'll be there.
Good deal. Steve?
One nice thing, thank you to all of you who came to the Wonder Gardens. There are some folks in this community who still think the Wonder Gardens is a mess. You're absolutely wrong. This is a bookend, this is a draw for this community that's been waiting. We have an opportunity to preserve green space and tropics and botanical gardens for our grandchildren's grandchildren. Thank you to the Shobs, to the Russells, to all the people who made contributions that night. To go from a $10,000 objective to $85,000, thank you very much.
Okay, good deal. All right, council, is there approval in minutes?
Yes, sir.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slata.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longberg.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we'll have public comment one more time. Unamos. Anyone who wishes to speak this time, please come forward on any city item.
Yes, Rick Steinmeier. Resource protection. One house to twenty acres of land, is that by right? That's what, what it says in here. Anybody familiar with that? That's involved with the firehouse tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any city items. Going, going, gone. Thank you very much, everybody.